Consideration of update and discussion on status of SNAP, CalFresh benefit delay. This is Supervisor Spatia and our Social Services Director Rachel Dillman Parsons. And I didn't mean to only recognize Sheriff Bingham. I knew that this was going to take a longer discussion, so I figured I'd get that one out of the way. Thank you for coming in.
Don't worry. There's a lot of information to go over. Is this working?
Yes.
And I didn't manage to put a PowerPoint together, so I'm sorry. It's going to be verbal update. And Paragon will provide a lot of the background information that's important in 10 minutes. I will sum it up as best I can. Some things may have happened since yesterday. I just got another update. Haven't read it yet.
Not a good one.
Not a good one. Okay. So as it stood yesterday, USDA had been, as you know, CalFresh benefits are delayed for the month of November 2025. And there were several lawsuits going on where a judge has ordered USDA to release partial funds to states by tomorrow, which is Wednesday. If USDA does release those funds, they originally said that they would release an issuance table to counties since it is not a full month worth of benefits. It's about 50% of people's November benefits. States are having an objection to that. They would prefer a percentage method because there will create a delay in how quickly benefits will issue. So if USDA comes back with a plan to issue benefits by percentage, our systems should be able to program within about a week. And then benefits would roll out over a 10-day period, so we're talking November-ish. If USDA goes with the issuance schedule, which is like a table of different allotments based on what people would be getting, that requires significantly more programming. It will take about three weeks for system programming, and then benefits would issue over 10 days. So we're talking end of November into early December. Most people not getting their partial November benefits until after Thanksgiving. And it's important to note, these are partial benefits, only about 50% of November benefits. So here is Tom. He's got the more important updates.
All right. Tom, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you and good morning, Board. I just caught the tail end of your update, Rachel, but I'll let you know what the latest is in Washington. USDA, or maybe Rachel had noticed, talked about this. USDA this morning issued guidance for the states on how to process these benefits. States were hoping that the guidance would have provided some flexibilities and/or waived some of the requirements, but unfortunately, the guidance really held strictly to the code that applies to the administration of CalFresh. So no additional flexibility is given by USDA today. Earlier today, the President on Truth Social said that he would not fund the SNAP program, even though the courts have ordered the administration to do so. Press Secretary Carolyn Levitt shortly thereafter walked back those comments stating that the President meant to say that any future contingency funds would not be released. Finally, the court case in Rhode Island continues. There was another filing today by the plaintiffs urging the judge to find that a full benefit be released in November. The judge will hear that case on Thursday in terms of providing a full benefit. As Rachel probably noted, USDA at this point says that it just does not have the ability to fund CalFresh more than 50% of the current November benefit. And additionally, USDA said that states should not, states and counties should not make eligible any new applicants during this month. And I'm happy to take other questions again. Sorry I had to, I joined late, but welcome the opportunity to meet with you all.
Yes, I didn't know if, I mean, I don't know. Wanted to ask a question about if and when, if this comes forward and they do approve it some way, shape, or form, does it retroactively go back to the first so that they would, like, let's say hypothetically, they're giving back their full benefits that they commonly receive, would it go back to the first so that they can receive the full benefits, or would it go to that day?
Yeah.
It's just a question.
Right. It is being phrased as a delay. So when the shutdown ends and people are eligible, get their benefits again, they will receive their full benefits. The court order and what's currently going on with USDA, there is a reserve fund for SNAP, but it's not enough to pay for all of November's benefits, which is why they're talking about only being able to pay for about 50%. So that would potentially be prior to the shutdown. Another side thought I have is that, given our state was ready to use the computer systems to issue full benefits, if the shutdown ends within the next few weeks, it might be faster to actually issue full benefits than it would be to issue whatever is currently happening in this court case. But that's, there's a big question mark around that. Tom, have more to add?
No, not really, Rachel. The other point that occurs to me, there are only, there are only a few vendors that work with states on CalFresh and SNAP. So those vendors too are going to be scrambling to get states back up and running. I don't know what that queue looks like, but there's only a limited bandwidth by the IT specialists that states contract with to do this work.
Yeah, the estimates I've been given depend kind of on what kind of table USDA releases, whether it's a percentage model or if it's actually an issuance table. Issuance tables will take longer to program, so we're looking at like three weeks out plus a 10-day issuance rollout, and that is at the point that USDA actually releases the funds in the direction. So it doesn't sound like benefits rolling out anytime soon. Okay.
Just to clarify real quick before we get too far. So I understand these system changes, it takes time to be able to program where we can do 50%, but does the original system stay like it is so it's immediately usable? Or do we have to now go back and it's another week to change that back?
Good question. I would hope, I do not know, but I will certainly pose that to the state. Typically, when we issue partial benefits, the system will let us do a supplement to get them up to the full. I will make sure they're considering that. Originally, the timeline given if the shutdown ended and we were ready to issue full benefits was seven to 10 days to have programming in place and then roll out benefits.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Spatia.
So just the analysis of the situation, even there's, in my opinion, there's a reason why only 50% is being given. This is within the context of the shutdown, and I'm sure Tom can speak better to this. It's about leverage between Republicans and Democrats. If people have food, there is less leverage and pressure on Democrats to end the shutdown. If people don't, then there's potentially pressure on them to be able to end it earlier. The fact that there is money potentially, because I haven't seen anything official that, other than words on paper, that they are going to, until I see something that here is the signed official thing that USDA has now submitted stuff to the state, nothing is moving at this moment in time. And that's the situation we're in, from what my understanding is. But that makes me even more concerned about December. If people have food, the shutdown most likely will continue.
Correct.
So one of the things that I had put into the memo was what happened in Napa County. And I think that that conversation can also be placed into the 4.1 extra item. Any spending that we do outside of a declared emergency will probably not going to be reimbursed whatsoever. It may not be reimbursed whatsoever anyways, but what is the traction for doing a declaration to see if that might be more helpful, to have flexibility on what can be spent? I know you've brought us some suggestions on if you spend your money that you would typically spend on rent, on food, does that now put you in danger that you may have evictions coming up, things like that, where now there's a potential of placing people into homelessness, which then you have program dollars for. But I'm just looking at what is the best way to be flexible in an environment where it's just unpredictable as to what will or will not happen within the next two months, if we're lucky, just two months?
Yes. I can speak to funding resources without a disaster or with a disaster, and also what is currently out there that we can use creatively for people. So there will be no reimbursement. That has been made very clear by very many different organizations. USDA has said, no, you cannot backfill if the state is finding money to continue CalFresh benefits, or the county is finding money to continue CalFresh benefits. You cannot draw down USDA funds to repay yourself. You're just out of that money. FEMA is not going to come in with funding if we declare a disaster. I verified KLOES is not going to be able to support any disaster that we declare. So any funding that we put towards this effort locally is entirely our contribution. We are not going to be reimbursed. If a disaster is declared, that does give me the option to use realignment funding in my department, because a disaster declaration would normally activate me for care and shelter, so feeding and shelter sites and that kind of thing. It's not going to be gift cards. There are pros and cons to that. Related, but not of the moment, HR1 changes the percentage of county admin contribution to 22.5%. And if that does not change, and if there is not a solution from the state to augment our funding, it's going to put some counties in a position where they can't afford to operate CalFresh any longer. We are one of those counties who will be in deficit with our realignment, but that's October 2026. The problem today is feeding people. So far is resources go within Social Services creatively using programs? Yes. If people have spent their rent money or their housing money on purchasing food, I have a few programs that are intended to prevent homelessness that they can request assistance from, and then we can help pay their rent. So if they are participating in welfare to work, they have minor children, they can call their worker and ask for the family stabilization program that can help them pay their housing costs if they have spent their housing money on food. Same thing for our elderly or disabled dependent adult population. They can contact Adult Services and ask for the Home Safe Program to prevent homelessness if they have spent their housing money on food. It's a bit of a workaround. We can pay the housing if you spent your housing money on food. There's a couple other programs under CalWorks that are little, but can provide a little help. That's special diet prescription by doctors under the CalWorks program can give you an extra $13 a month. Not a lot. Contact your worker if you're interested in that. And then for people who are pregnant and have verified pregnancy, again, the CalWorks program offers a $100 cash aid one-time payment that can be requested by contacting a worker. Those are what is immediately available within my umbrella. It's important to point out that WIC, Women's Infants and Children, is still open, still accepting applications, able to issue benefits to families who are eligible to purchase approved food from retailers. It comes on a card, just like EBT. And then we have a community resource list pinned to the top of our Facebook page that we are constantly updating. We have verified that it is accurate for the public. We're handing it out at food banks. And it's also important to note, the Clear Lake Gleaners are Lake County's official food bank. They are the Temporary Assistance Food Program Food Bank, recognized by the state and federal government as Lake County's food bank. The funding that Governor Newsom made available, the 80 million you may have heard in the news, is not new funding. It's the ability to draw down early their existing funding. We spoke with the Gleaners, and they said they think they're okay for now and didn't plan to draw down funding at this time. It is also only the Gleaners who can call in the California National Guard for assistance. And when we spoke with them, they didn't feel the need to do that. They have a lot of people volunteering, and I provide my staff to them as well. Six of my staff helped them beg today. Five of my staff will be there helping with traffic control at their big distribution tomorrow. And we hope they're ready to expand if the need grows. Part of their barriers is that it takes about two weeks from the point they order food for it to arrive. We've talked with a few folks who may be able to help us with that. We're looking into it, not sure if we could expedite that. Also, we need to give a big thanks to the motorcycle clubs who are operating the Turkey Run, the Freedom Riders, the Good Old Boys, Winos Crew, Priesthood, the 20 Boys, and Gosa Freedom. They're providing 2,000 turkeys to the Gleaners, which will be delivered prior to the November 20th distribution for our families in need. We've also been compiling a list of local Thanksgiving dinners that are going to be free to the community. We're still working on compiling that list. So far, we have Twin Pine Casino in Middletown, who will be putting that on again. Let me see if I got my list together here. And three other organizations have confirmed, I don't have them on my handout. We'll be publishing that on our Facebook page as soon as our list is ready. Oh, yes, I do. Solana Women in Medicine, United Christian Parish, and Middletown Methodist Church have all confirmed they're doing Thanksgiving dinners, and we're still reaching out to gather more information on that. And then I think it would be important to note that also, if there are folks out there who want to make donations to these organizations because they're able to do so, the Lake County Food Bank, Clear Lake Gleaners, now has the ability to accept donations online through the Lake County Community Foundation. So a huge thanks to them for hosting that website. The website is lakeccf.org, and there is a Give button in the top right corner to make donations. We're also working with nonprofit partners to look into for-profit entities' efforts towards hunger relief. As a community department, we can't solicit donations, but we'll work with our nonprofits to help ensure those contributions for our hungry folks out there are going to the Gleaners or other food banks where our population can access them. And then just demographically, I know you know the caseload size. Some information that I don't always share is that as of our, for our 16,320 CalFresh recipients, 46% of them are children, 18% are elderly, and 4% are disabled. Demographically, you know, where do these folks live? We have 44% in Clear Lake, 13% in Lakeport, 12% in Kelseyville, 7% in Clear Lake Oaks. And then the rest of the population is less than 5% spread out, or per area, spread out throughout the county. I can send you the hard numbers if you're interested in all the specifics. And other important things to note.
Go ahead, Brett. To the question on the realignment money, if there was an emergency, do we have a number of what that money, how much that is?
What's that?
To the question of if there was an emergency that freed up realignment money?
How much?
How much? Do we know?
There's no cap, although please don't spend it all. We do what is necessary to meet the need. Normally, what hits my realignment is staff time, because Red Cross will come in eventually and provide the sheltering, provide the feeding, and the resources. Red Cross is not providing relief for this. It is a nationwide need, and they're kind and helpful, but they cannot help with this. So we'd be picking up the cost. If I were asked to do it, I would be looking at the most cost-effective, we're kind of rolling into the special agenda item, but I'd be asked, I'd ask to do the most cost-effective method, which would probably be MREs for distribution, which we have used in sheltering situations before. They're shelf-stable for 10 years, so if for some reason we didn't need to distribute them all, I could use them in future disasters.
Well, certainly, we could talk about it more, but then again, also, the risk is that we're not getting money back, and that's money that we also have to use to operate the other programs throughout the year.
Right. And we're currently in IHSS negotiations.
Right.
Can't talk about that a lot, but that is another hit to my realignment fund.
Yeah. So I definitely want to be careful with that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We'll open it up, but go ahead, Supervisor Spatia.
Just last comment. I'm trying to get a response from Behavioral Health, from the COC perspective, the Continuum of Care. We do have some money set aside for prevention, and so trying to figure out within the legalities of how that money was received, if it can be turned around, as you mentioned, if this is money that you're using for rent that you're now moving over to food, maybe there's ways for us to be able to help in this situation. So trying to get an answer on that.
I appreciate that. A good creative thinking.
There are some, quite a number of dollars. I know that we set aside $400,000 specifically for prevention from one grant, but there's other grants as well. So let me get the information to you as soon as possible.
For the Board, one additional update. Rachel mentioned WIC. The administration on Friday released another $450 million for that program, which should take WIC through the better part of December. It depends on state spending, but that was, that was, that was good news. WIC nationally spends about $500 million a month.
Yeah. I mean, just in general, all of my programs besides CalFresh are funded through December 31st, and then if the shutdown lasts longer, we're, we're in some trouble. We'll, we'll figure that out when it comes.
All right. With that, I will open it up for the public, if there's anyone that has a comment or on Zoom. All right. If we can unmute, state your name, and then we'll give you three minutes. Guest, guest, go ahead.
And you might want to remind him that we do have the next item, too.
Oh, yes. And we do have the extra item as well to address, so if it's, yeah, we'll have that coming up next.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall, and Board. Angela Amaral, I don't, this is overarching. Earth Vice Chair. For those not familiar with Earth, it's the Municipal Advisory Council that represents the eastern portion of District 3 from Glenhaven to the Colusa County line. Tomorrow's our normally scheduled Earth monthly meeting, which begins at 4:00 PM. Starting at 10:00 AM tomorrow, non-perishable food items can be dropped off at the Moose Lodge, and from there, we will take them to a drop-off location. We'd like to, there is going to be additional discussion at tomorrow's meeting to assist our local community residents as well. And let's see, for more information, residents can visit the Earth website at lakeETHCA.com or the East Region Town Hall Facebook page. We have a flyer on there of requests. And we'd like to thank John and everyone at the Moose Lodge for allowing drop-offs to begin at 10:00 AM. Drop-offs will go until the end of the Earth meeting, which usually ends around 5:30. So we'd like to see people come by and drop stuff off. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another? Elizabeth, if you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Crandall. This is Elizabeth Larson. I'm coming to you today not as a journalist, but as the Commission pastor of Kelseyville Presbyterian Church, which has a food pantry. And I just want to say, I'm very grateful to Director Dillman Parsons for her work to convene the local food pantries this Friday, getting all of us together to start talking about collaboration. It's long overdue, and I'm grateful that she's taking the lead on that. And it's not just important because of what's happening now, also as mentioned, it's also important because of what's going to occur in about a year when HR1's impacts start to hit. You know, we're looking at the most aggressive social benefits cuts in U.S. history, and what we know is that rural areas like ours will certainly be hit extremely hard because we are already struggling with getting the resources we need. And as also was mentioned, there are going to be cuts to Medicaid or Medi-Cal, and based on the Congressional Budget Office's, what they're estimating, 4 million people are going to lose food benefits because of that bill. And if you extrapolate that down, that could be between 1,500 and 2,000 people in Lake County, by my estimate. That may not sound big to some people, but it is a big number. That's a lot of hungry people that food pantries like KPCs will see coming to us and to Social Services. And Supervisor Spatia's concerns are well-taken as well, people losing housing as a result of these financial pressures. That's one of the things food pantries do. We lift some of the pressure off people's budgets so they can keep their utilities on and stay housed. And that's why starting this process now is so important for all of us to be talking, so that we aren't just responding, but trying to get ahead of it. Kelseyville Presbyterian's food pantry started in 2011, as Lake County was still dealing with the impacts of the Great Recession. And these types of economic challenges tend to hit later and longer in places like ours. And so in the meantime, I think it's really important to tell people what they can do to help. I urge everyone to find out where their local food pantry is, contact them and find out what they need, whether it's funds, food donations, or volunteers. Trust me, a little will go a long way. Local food pantries really stretch dollars and make the most of every donation. And our volunteers deserve a lot of credit for that, and there are many of them. And let me give you one example. Mr. Carter's wife, son, and daughter have been among our most devoted volunteers. Mason Carter can lug a 50-pound bag of carrots like nobody's business. So we're grateful for people like that. And a lot of us are gearing up to see what we can do in the meantime. We're thankful to groups like Adventist Health, which are helping us. And there's a new thing called a simple gesture, which is being rolled out locally. You can go to ASGEventManager.com and find out more about the Clear Lake, Kelseyville, and Lakeport chapters and how you can get involved. So again, thank you for having this discussion and bringing everybody together so we can start being proactive and not reactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for that. Any other Zoom? Shannon, if you can unmute?
Yes. I just wanted to add on to Elizabeth's comment about a simple gesture, and that is that it is not just Lakeport and Kelseyville. It really goes around the lake, including Clear Lake, Lake Nice, Lucerne, Glenhaven, Lower Lake, Lakeport, Kelseyville. And the next food delivery for that project is this coming Saturday, so I wanted to give very direct information for how people can take part in that, and that is to go to wwwdiscoverlakeport.com. And then you click on the Community Organizations, choose a simple gesture food donation, and then when you scroll down on that top page, you choose your geographic area. So you can choose Clear Lake and Lower Lake, or you can choose Lakeport, or you can choose Kelseyville, or you can choose Upper Lake North Shore. And what happens is that individuals put in their address, and they say that they will put a bag of groceries on their porch, and then a driver from one of the simple gesture chapters is assigned that address. They pick up the food, and then they bring it direct to one of the food pantries that is serving in that local area. For the areas that do not yet have local committees or chapters, Gleaners will be receiving the food for people who sign up for those additional areas. So that's this coming Saturday, starting at 9:00. You can not only volunteer to provide a bag of food, but you can also volunteer to be one of the drivers for any of those chapters. And so I just wanted to give additional information for people, because that's a quick, immediate way that we can stop our local food pantries. Again, that website is wwwdiscoverlakeportca.com, and then you want to click on the simple gesture food program.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the Board. You have your pen up, Supervisor Spatia.
Yeah, just before we roll into the next
Just before we roll into the next item, I just want to give Rachel so many props. You have been working on this from the very beginning, nonstop. And I, I just, I'm grateful that we have you as a leader in our, in our community. And you're really doing a wonderful job right now. So thank you, Rachel, for all of it.
Thank you.
Yes, kudos. And I did it that.
Yeah. And, and it's been really great to see the amount of community support. And there's all these different ways to donate. As we just heard, a huge step was getting that online portal for the gleaners. We've been working on that for a long time. We finally, finally made that happen. That's great. But just a reminder to people, giving food is great, but there is a burden that comes with that. You have to check expirations. Giving money goes a lot further. The buying power, as Elizabeth mentioned, with these food pantries is so much stronger if you can just give money. And sometimes that's easier. But any way that people want to volunteer or give is really, really appreciated now.
All right. There's nothing else? We'll go ahead and close this portion, or actually, we'll close this item. It was an update, possible direction. But we'll go into our extra item that addresses this. It's a good segue for it. So we'll go into, do I start at B, since we already approved it? Yeah. So it would be consideration of recommendation to approve administrative funding to provide hunger relief due to SNAP, CalFresh benefit delay, and the amount of $40,000 per week for two weeks, $80,000 total, and consideration of recommendation to establish an ad hoc work group for hunger relief due to SNAP, CalFresh benefit delay. And I will give.
Yeah. So this is something that Vice Chair Rasmussen and I have been working on for a week or so. I don't know how long. Of really trying to figure out what are the actual stopgaps in programs that we can do to prevent hunger in our community. There's been so much up in the air. That's why this came as an extra item. We had a long discussion on Friday. We still didn't know which way we should go in, whether or not we should have an emergency. And Rachel talked about that. But we did put together some plans, and we've done a lot of outreach. But I think maybe we'll just turn it over to Rachel, and then we can fill in some of the other items as we go.
So in addition to the need to address, you know, the immediate hunger in Lake County, you're probably aware, other counties have been doing things like NAPA's disaster declaration. So something unique about NAPA as compared to us is they can't really touch any funds without that, whereas you do have the ability to touch county administrative funding without a disaster declaration. Also, if we're talking about NAPA, there's just like a huge disparity in resources and need. NAPA receives about $1 million in the tobacco settlement funds that they used to fund their disaster relief. We receive more like $500,000, and that money is already earmarked for other things the county needs to support. Additionally, NAPA issues $1.9 million a month in CalFresh. We issue $2.9 million a month in CalFresh. So there's just a huge disparity there, where that is not going to work as a solution. I also personally have large concerns about issuing gift cards. There is just so many logistical problems there. So if we are considering addressing hunger in Lake County, I think it's important for us to do so with fiscal responsibility, make the most of our community organizations, who are already out there helping the community. So these funds would be primarily going to, the recommendation is to go to our service organizations who are willing to step up and provide meals in the community to go. The money would ideally be spent just on the food, no staff time or administration. My staff would provide delivery to individuals who are disabled or elderly. And we would do our best to limit the availability to CalFresh recipients through my agency verifying people truly have the need and are on that list. Additionally, we're thinking also to purchase the supply of MREs or other pantry goods to stock around the lake, at my office, Social Services, and then at the peer support centers. Behavioral Health operates, surprise, Behavioral Health. So those were the initial thoughts around how to spend the funding, should your board approve it. We would normally have suggested looking at it week by week, but there is no word to see this meeting next week, which is why this is a two-week request. And of course, if the shutdown resolves prior to then, we would just go ahead and shut down operations. CalFresh benefits typically issued to families between the first and the 10th of the month. So some families haven't been hit yet. We have a little time to set this up and get it going, in time to meet the need before hunger hits too hard in our community. And like I said, there's really no telling when, when the benefits will issue. It could not, it could be quite some time. It could be just a couple of weeks away. And then additionally, we're asking for you to form an ad hoc work group for us to work out more of the finer details with regard to how we're going to operationalize this. Yeah. That's essentially what I had to share.
Yeah. Well, one other point was looking to expand the meal services that are already out there. So we know that, you know, there are a lot of meals that are already being served. How can we work with those organizations, provide them with some more funding to expand what they're already doing? And then Vice Chair and I have reached out to the service organizations in our districts. And so we felt like that was a, a good way to do some outreach and take the temperature. And it would be great, probably, for everyone to do this around the lake. The Cobb Mountain Lions have already stepped up to do a dinner next week. They want to do more. They have just enough money and just enough food to do one meal. They were going to do it regardless of what we've got planned. So we would like to be able to support these organizations to do a meal a week. Some organizations want to do a to-go meal, like Vice Chair has some information on that. But the Cobb Lions just love cooking meals, and that's what they love to do, and we want to support them. Elizabeth and I have had a lot of back and forth about what Kelseyville Presbyterian Church can offer. There's a lot of resources that she has been looking at expanding the pantry, potentially meals, working with the other service organizations. So this, this $40,000 a week number came from us looking at all of these options, the way that we can just get money out so that meals can be served, so that we can meet these immediate needs on a week-by-week basis. So this is enough, and this request would be for two weeks until our next meeting, when we can reassess, because this is just going to continue to be a dynamic situation. And I, I'll pass it to you now.
Yeah, I'd like, one of the ideas I've outreach to, I've got tentative agreements with four service organizations in Lakeport that could probably quickly get together a situation where we, we put together a grocery bag where, say, on a Saturday morning, you could pick it up. It's dinner, maybe breakfast the next day. So it's maybe two meals. We could get that off the ground probably fairly quickly, especially with Rachel's help, and do it like a drive-through, but they could also deliver to people that don't have transportation. So that's, I think that's one easy way to do it. They can cook it at home, and we're, it's not as labor-intensive as actually cooking a, a big meal for 300 people, which is a lot more complex. So that, I think, is, is a good point. And I think there's probably, like Supervisor Pyska said, there's, there's other service organizations in other districts that, my guess is, they would jump on board with trying to do something like that as well. And if we could kick them down the cache to do that for, for a couple of weeks, I think that's, that's a good idea. We got $25,000, right, just from the situation earlier that we didn't spend, so.
Budgetarily, yes.
Yeah. So, and I know, I appreciate assistant CAOs, you know, looking for, to be able to fulfill these $80,000, which I think we can, but we don't have unlimited money in our, our general fund to be able to do things like this. But I think we can find some money to, to do it. And that, we didn't expect this $25,000 to be available earlier this morning, and now it is. So I could easily go towards that. I do want to be careful with, with emergency declarations, because I don't want, you know, to put a false hope out in the community that if we declare an emergency, that typically means we're open for business. We're doing anything and everything we can. We don't worry about the cost. And this is a different kind of a situation. We're not going to get reimbursements, and the public typically is going to, there's going to be a lot of thought that you declared an emergency, you got to provide this. And we just don't have a, a huge ability to do an unlimited amount of money, not to mention that the realignment money, we have to pay for other things going in the rest of the year. And I don't know where we'd, we'd get that money back, so.
Yeah. There'd be no reimbursement coming from anywhere. There, even with a disaster declaration, there wouldn't be something like a local assistance center, which people have perhaps come to expect, because the local assistance center is intended to aid in the recovery effort to get back to your property or, or things like that. So this isn't the kind of disaster that would come with that. It can be something in our back pocket to consider if this drags on longer, to make a disaster declaration so that we can access some of my realignment. We need to be cautious with it, given what's coming on with HR1. But if the need is right now, that's further down the road.
Yeah. And I'm certainly in favor of keeping it on the table, keeping all options out there available for, for our consideration. But I'm in favor of supporting the $80,000 from the general fund for, for this situation to try to get something off the ground and give food to these folks, specifically the CalFresh that, that aren't getting it. All right. I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers or on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Supervisors, Angela Amaral, again, for the East Region Town Hall. One other thing I forgot to mention is that Earth has been in contact with the Clear Lake Oaks Peer Support Center as well, which provides daily meals and other supplies. We've been told that they can accept perishable items that can be frozen and monetary donations, I believe it's through Helping Hands. We hope to provide more details on that at tomorrow's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, if you unmute? If you can unmute?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in follow-up, yeah, Kelseyville Presbyterian wants to help in any way we can. We have a licensed commercial kitchen. We're licensed with environmental health. So we can also help with food prep. I happen to know a professional chef. I might be able to get him to go in and do some of this. And I'm going to be talking to some other chefs and food preparers to see what we could do if we need to, to do, if we need to do meal prep. And I'm going to be talking to our leadership council about how else we can, we can bulk up. So just please keep us in the loop. Let us know how we can support this. We are, we're here to help.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. No more hands on Zoom. With that, close public comment and bring it back to the board for potential action. Or Stephen, you look like.
The one thing I did want to say is, it is nice to access realignment, 1991 through DSS. But with our current environment, try not to hit it very hard, because it's part of foster care, adoptions, IHSS workers. It's the type of things that you do, are coming down the road, are going to get hit hard. And we don't have a lot left over. Neither does general fund. But in this rare instance, I recommend more from the general fund.
Supervisor Sabatia and Vice Chair.
So I can appreciate the concern or issues with the gift cards. But to me, not knowing how long this will last, and knowing I've had conversations for many, many years with our local grocers, that they survive off a very small profit margin already. They don't double the price of food that they purchase. It's a very slim margin. I understand the gift cards going directly to grocery stores so that the users, the consumers can go to the grocery stores where people can keep their jobs, rather than giving free food at a service location, which is not a bad thing, but that takes away from the continuation of the infrastructure we have of how people should be accessing food in the first place. And so I, I just want to share the concern that our grocery stores, we may see, depending on how long this lasts, we may see some changes. And so I, I think it's difficult to create that support. But I wanted to speak to that, that I appreciated seeing NAPA doing that, because I understand why they did that, because it helps to continue the system that we have to ensure that doesn't collapse, no matter how, not knowing how long this will last.
Yeah, that's an important point.
And so, because I spoke recently to a couple of the grocery stores, at least in my district, to discuss these things, and they're looking at opportunities and options and tightening their belts and figuring out how to handle it. But it all depends how long it takes. I'm looking at the number of people, and do appreciate that you've been keeping us posted on, on the numbers, even breaking it down a little bit more. Whether families are getting supposed, supposed to get their SNAP benefits on the first, second, third, all the way through the 10th. Right now, obviously, the first four days, nobody's gotten that. I think they're all in the same, same situation. That's why when you go shopping around the first or the second, the grocery stores are packed, because they've probably ran out of money before the end of the month. And so they want to refill as soon as possible, not wait a couple of weeks, because life is great, right? So I know that you're supposed to get 1,600 or approximately each day that is supposed to access their SNAP funds, but I'm looking at the bulk. It's probably all 16,000 that are either already hurting or we're out of money and, and, and on the, on the cusp. So when I look at $40,000 divided by 16,000, I'm looking at like $2.50 per person, which would be provided, I think that's approximately what I had. Let me just do the math again.
Right. It, it's close to, it's a drop in the bucket. MREs come at about $3 each, which is why we're looking at what is most cost-effective. Gift cards, NAPA's gift cards are 25 bucks each, and that can either be, you know, a whole week worth of noodles or a couple sandwiches from Safeway, depending on how you spend it. The concerns I have regarding gift cards is, where do you get 10,000 gift cards on demand? As well as, you're kind of creating a new eligibility program. How are you deciding how each household gets what amount on the gift card? Some households get 50 bucks. Some households with 13 people get a couple thousand. There's a huge variance in need between our CalFresh households, and it's almost like creating a new eligibility program, which comes with, how do you handle appeals? What if somebody lost their card? What if their card was stolen? Are they spending their card on the right things? Because you can buy alcohol with a gift card. Can't buy alcohol at CalFresh, with CalFresh. And then there's also fair hearing process. Do they get the right to appeal what we're doing?
And I get the complication, not, not, not arguing against those complications. I guess my addition to the conversation would be, in the ad hoc work group, can we please invite our grocery stores?
Sure.
Because I think they are a, a instrumental part to the conversation, because it's not just what's happening today, it's also what's going to happen tomorrow. And, and maybe they have ideas on some of those things.
They're also an important part of the edible food recovery program.
And some, some are playing better than others. Maybe now is the time, if Director Ewing is, is listening, that some do great in doing food recovery, and some are completely ignoring us. And I think that we can make some phone calls today to make sure that that happens. But I know from the gleaners, they're getting some really good amount of food from our grocery stores because of that. So again, breaking it down with just 16,000, which is a rounded number, it's not the exact number, it's more than 16,000. It's $2.50 for a week per person.
I know. It's a stopgap.
And I, I know that we are saying our food pantries and others can make those go a mile. I, I want to open the conversation of, can we do more? Because, I mean, if we're looking at potentially 80,000, and again, we don't know how long this will last, but we're looking at 80,000, that is a drop in the bucket compared to some of the reserves that we have in different locations, in different places. I'm not saying I want to do $1 million or $2 million. That's, that's ridiculous. But can we double that amount, at the very least, today in looking can we double that amount at the very least today in looking at what we're doing? Because $2.50 for a week's worth of food for somebody is going to help? But I feel like it's slightly inappropriate, because it feels good, but are we really making the difference? And can we make a better difference today by offering a little bit more to be able to do what we intend to do?
I'm not going to tell you to not put more money towards this effort. I think the idea, though, is not to replace the full benefit, because there are, you know, the gleaners and food banks and food pantries out there that can meet some of the need. It's to potentially assist with making it not so hard. I don't, you know, I'm open to whatever.
And then my last question to you, as well as my colleagues, is, how does that money get split? Is it evenly split for whoever wants to say, yes, we're doing food? Or is it going to be split based on population needs, in the sense of, well, how you put down what percentage from zip codes? How is the money going to be split, I think is an important thing, because if all the food is in Lakeport, there's a problem.
There's.
If all the food is in Clear Lake, there's a problem.
Yes.
But there's different needs in different locations, and so if there's 100 different agencies that says we want to do food, how are we going to select?
Well, we're still bound by the purchasing ordinances. It doesn't get waived when we do this. So we would be looking for quotes from agencies regarding, how many can you feed? What is that going to cost? And there would be an MOU process, and we'll make it super fast. But to make sure we're doing it correctly, and this would be, of course, something the ad hoc worker would flesh out.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say.
But we had, like, some pre-discussions around it, making sure that there are places all around the lake, making sure that Clear Lake has a sufficient number to meet the demand of 44% of CalFresh recipients residing there. So we've had some pre-discussions and along those lines.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, I appreciate those points, a couple of things. Question about the behavioral health money that you're checking into, was the thought that maybe some of that could?
It's COC money.
COC money, I'm sorry.
I'm just checking with behavioral health, because they're the lead agency.
But the idea is, maybe that could be used for some of this food.
I, I would like to believe it's possible, but it depends on the legal terminologies that were used and the grants that we received.
Yeah, and I agree, we, we need to, you know, take care of where the needs are. I think a lot of it's going to be dependent on what, who has the ability to stand programs up and get them going, there's an aspect of that. But I think that can be worked out with the, the work group. But I would also be in favor of, you know, spending money at our own stores here in the county to buy stuff. I mean, I think that's something we need to look at. We're, we're trying to take care of our whole county, so we need to, to buy these supply, like the MREs, we can't get those here, that's not a problem. But, but some of these, if we're going to do a bagged grocery program or something, we can, we can go to our stores and try to work out a deal, spend the money in, in our own county, not take it across the line to another county. So that's kind of what, where I set on that.
Yeah, if your board wants to make it part of the direction, we could include that in the MOUs.
Yeah.
And in, if auditing is necessary, require receipts shown.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea to, you know, make that, that clear.
Okay.
But, but I'm, if we have more money, I'm in favor of looking for more money. I just, it'd be nice to know if some of that money was available from the COC.
We could also add discretionary from districts, too.
Yes, we could.
That could support this week to week. We just don't know, this was us trying, our very best, trying to put a number together. It's not a perfect number, but is this going to be a short-term gap? Is this going to be a long-term gap? Do we start, you know, if this does go on a long time, are we gonna, are we gonna fall off? Because we just can't afford to sustain it. So I think we need to look at something that, you know, look at a number that we can sustain for a while. But I think it's, it would be important to add discretionary dollars into this, too, if, you know, if that's a possibility, because.
Just for transparency, I've given to the gleaners already, and I was preparing to do the same thing again.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that takes away from what you're asking or not.
No, I'm just, I mean, we know breakdown by zip code where the most need is. I've always given to the gleaners, too, and.
Gleaners serve all of Lake.
The gleaners does serve everybody.
Brad?
I know, I just, I think that's a good idea to look at, and I know, I, I wasn't here, but I believe this board has given substantial donation, or not donations, but has dedicated substantial amounts of discretionary funds to the gleaners in past years.
Yeah, I think it was 40 or 50,000 dollars last year.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From here, where, what's, are we going to stick with the?
I, I mean, I just think for this first week, for this first.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, I'm comfortable staying where we are, if you want to make additional contributions. I think that would be welcome and appreciated from discretionary accounts. But I, you know, let's get this money out, and let's start seeing how we can make a difference, and we can always readjust in two weeks. If there's an emergency, we could come back next week, if, if something really terrible happens, we have the ability to call an emergency meeting. But I think we need to act right now on what we've got put in front of us.
Stephen?
So just keep in mind, we do have a structurally balanced budget as we speak, so if we do anything related to reallocating funds, we can do that without a resolution, but if we pull anything from reserves, et cetera, it would take a resolution, which cannot be done today. So I would recommend something in the range of what I can budget transfer around, out of, probably thinking budget unit 1781, where special projects, I can make that, swing that.
Okay.
But I wouldn't be able to do a resolution until a special meeting or the 18th for anything additional, like what Supervisor Spatia is talking about, maybe more. That's the limitations I have right now.
You can move around the 80,000 today.
Supervisor Owen?
I would like to see that other 25,000 put in with it, to be honest. There's the 25,000 that we did not allocate with the.
That was already part of my 1781 adjustment, but if.
Oh.
If the board so chooses to add that on top of the 80, I'll find a way to make that work.
It was just thought, and then I kind of liked the idea, I know a lot of people weren't real excited about the MREs, but when people are home at night, or, and there's no place to go, it's nice to have that, you know, something there in the house when they're hungry. So it, you know, a few of those are, I think, would be shrewd, because that's when they can't get to a food bank, or the perishables are gone, and it's just nice to have something else, so they have something in there.
Yeah, that's why pallets of the MREs can be on hand.
Yep.
If someone's walking into one of our offices.
No, I, I think that's shrewd, and because, and, and, you know, too, if somebody gets sick, they don't want to go out. So it's just nice to have something that's non-perishable there.
My, my initial thought, when I mentioned the 25, was that would be used for the 80. That's, that's what I would say for today.
Oh, I, I misunderstood that, I'm so sorry.
Yes, I was just saying, that's what my thought was, but obviously, it's up to the board, but.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move that the board take action to approve administrative funding to provide hunger relief due to SNAP and CalFresh benefit delay in the amount of $40,000 per week for the, two weeks, $80,000 total.
Second. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
And then the next would be to establish this ad hoc work group.
For hunger relief.
For hunger relief, yeah, sorry.
SNAP, CalFresh benefit delay. Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as part of this motion, your board may want to consider the membership of this ad hoc committee, and I specifically identified for purposes of this motion.
And that's, that's what I was going to ask.
I'd be willing to serve on it.
I'll, I'll serve on it.
If you want me on it.
Yes.
We need.
Um, with 44% coming out of 95422, I would like to be one of the supervisors on this. I know I've been in a lot of communication with Director Dilman Parsons, obviously other supervisors I have as well, and I just would like to be a participant.
Okay.
I can't argue with that. I mean, it does have 44, I'd be willing to step off, I would still want to be involved in working with community groups. I, I think I could still do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think maybe we could get that guidance out to all of the supervisors, so that everyone can work with the service groups in our districts.
Do we have anybody in the Middletown area?
I think the Mountain Lion, or, I'm sorry, the Lions, Middletown Lions.
Middletown Lions.
Yeah.
Okay.
And at their community center would be great, and then Twin Pine does meals, too. So I think there's some options. There's also the senior center, so.
I was going to talk to them, but I just wanted to know if there was anybody already established, because you didn't mention them, they, when I went on your website, it didn't have them listed.
Uh, the Middletown Senior Center, I think they're at the end on resources for senior citizens, like the very last page of the list. I'll double check. I have had Dina, our program manager over the AAA, reaching out to the senior centers to see mostly, are they doing anything extra, are they planning to do Thanksgiving dinners? It was the senior center and clearly actually that indicated if funding could be found, they're interested in expanding Thanksgiving dinners. I don't think any of the others responded that they could expand, but they're still feeding the seniors.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't find it on the website either for Middletown, Lower Lake, but not Middletown.
Yeah, that was one of the, yeah, senior centers getting them to expand what they're already doing.
Shannon? Did, I don't know if we, do we need to take public comment for B, or did we, was this kind of an all-inclusive thing already? I'll just go ahead and open it for, go ahead, Shannon. I know she wants to help, so it's not like.
I was just going to add, also in Middletown on Mondays and Thursdays, the Methodist Church does a free dinner.
Right, thank you, Shannon.
Boy, I'm glad we went, we opened that one up.
Um.
He was. Supervisor Spatia?
I just wanted to ask if there's others that we would request to be on the ad hoc, or if that's going through Director Dilman Parsons to make that list? Because I know we have the two supervisors at this moment, but I think it's important that we have the, the right partners at the table as well.
Yeah, so I was going to just add, as for staff, it would be important to have someone from admin.
Agreed.
And probably, do we want to have behavioral health, or we, since we're planning on?
That could make sense, although I'm certain they will support our distribution efforts.
Okay. And then we may need public health, because if we're looking at commercial kitchens, that may need inspections. So that would, I think, on the staffing side. On the stakeholder side, I think it would be important to also, you know, we have grocery stores have NCO, because we've, there's conversations with the grocery stores, it's difficult for the county, like Rachel was saying, to negotiate donations, but having NCO in place to maybe facilitate those conversations would be helpful.
Yes.
And then I don't think we need to limit the stakeholders right now, could, I think, can we add them as needed?
I think that would be logical if it's permitted. I would be also bringing my CalFresh program manager with me, Tara Gandolfo, for support.
Yeah, and I think Rachel needs to have some discretion, as we work through this, on who are the, some of those players are.
Supervisor Spatia?
Yeah, what do you guys think about adding somebody from education? Just because so many families can be connected with through education. I know that their breakfast and lunch will be that much more important, but they did a bang-up job during COVID, and looking to see if that's something that they're already being prepared for.
Yes, I forgot to bring that up, because.
Me, too.
We did talk about that, there are 17 days of, 17 days in November where kids will not be at school.
Right.
Which means all those kids that rely on the meals, the free breakfast and lunch, are going to go a long time, with the Thanksgiving break being nine consecutive days. So that is, sorry, we forgot about that one, that is something that Rachel and I have been talking about, along with Brock, and they are part of the feeding partners.
Yes, I invited everyone on first five to the Feeding Partners meeting, including Brock. Yeah.
All right, on the same page there? All right, to, are there any public comment? All right, cool, I'll, I'll close that, and go from there. The ad hoc committee, do we need a motion for it, or would you like to do that, Lloyd?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So currently, there is a motion in front of your board, there was some discussion of the memberships to that, just as a side note, and we're still within the motion to be seconded, right, for your board's consideration. The membership list, as you've pointed, as your board has pointed out, can be revised, added to. And since this is an ad hoc committee, the, under the county's policies and procedures, the membership of that ad hoc committee, if it is going to be revised, can be, can be revised, added to pursuant to chair director, so from your chair. So that would be just staff running it by your chair, or Director Parsons running it by your chair, as to the membership list. But what's before your board, as to this subitem, is the, the formation of this ad hoc committee with the members as listed. And that's what's on the table right now for seconding and, and approval.
So moved? Did we have the motion?
No, you so.
Well, you started the motion.
I did start.
And you so moved with Lloyd's.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0.